I'll order the City of Columbia City Council meeting on the September seventeenth, twenty twenty four. We'll have the end, give the invocation, and then we'll all rise and join in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. The end?
Lord, we acknowledge your presence among us tonight, and we pray for your guidance during this meeting. Give us the wisdom to work in the best interests of everyone in our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The end, will you call the roll?
Yengus? Souter? Attilio?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
Just for informational purposes, John Yengus is on a business trip, and he's joined us by Zoom. So he'll be with us, but in accordance with policy, he cannot vote or participate in the meeting tonight. So our councilman is on board with us tonight, but not a voting member. At this point, I want to point out that you've all received a copy of the council minutes of September third, twenty twenty four. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? There are none that'll be accepted as submitted. Regarding a reading of communications, we received a letter from Debbie Himes, President of the Columbian and Fairfield Township Historical Society, requesting permission to reschedule the Citizens of the Cemetery Tour Chapter Three event, which was previously approved by City Council at the September third, twenty twenty four meeting, to November first, twenty twenty four, due to a conflict with the school football event, and pending approval with Park Board at their meeting on September twenty third, twenty four. Everything will remain the same for the event as previously approved. We'll consider that matter under new business. On reports of commissions and board, you received a copy of the Park Recreation and Cemetery Board Meeting Minutes of August twenty six, twenty twenty four, and you also received a copy of the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of September tenth, twenty twenty four. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? I, hearing none, they'll be accepted as submitted. We have no one that has signed up for recognition of persons' desires to appear, but about, I'd like to comment at this point that about three years ago, we started the tradition and our desire to cooperate with the schools and make the school students very aware and participate in the activities of their city. And we've had the great honor of having representative school, student representatives from Columbia High School be at our meetings. And tonight, we have Katie Campbell here with us up front, who's our student representative. We really appreciate Katie coming tonight, and we appreciate her being able to participate in the program as we proceed. So thank you very much for coming, Katie. Moving to the managers' report. Lance, you have your manager's report?
Yeah, sure.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, since the last meeting, we had lots of news come out. Last Thursday was a big day. We woke up to the news from T-Mobile that we were recipients of the Hometown Grant, and that's a national program awarded to over fourteen millions to three hundred twenty-five communities across forty-seven states and over six hundred fifty applicants this round. And we were chosen to receive a fifty thousand dollar check for one of the high school projects. We've been working with a high school creative entrepreneur class last year, and they selected this, we always give them different projects, but we kind of gave them the city the blank slate. We said, hey, what would you do with the city to, you know, make it more attractive to you and, you know, really get their opinions? So a few years ago, they did the Creative Entrepreneur Class, did the Columbia Corridor, and then most recently this year, we were over in the Schmitz parking lot there and unveiled a couple murals. So that was their, that was, let's see, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three project. And last year's twenty-three school class chose this lot right up here. It's right across from the Columbia Corridor. It's where our daily bread used to be. It's a stone lot, and they had some pretty cool designs, pretty cool ideas that they wanted to do there. And Bryce actually wrote the grant to T-Mobile, and we are going to be getting that check on Friday night, right before the football game. So you're going to be all invited. We'll send it out, an invite with the exact time for you. But T-Mobile will actually be sending representatives that night. So I'm guessing if you get there around six, I think the, let's see, the check presentation will be, you know, probably somewhere between six twenty and six forty. We're still working that out, but we'll get that down there to you. So we're going to invite, of course, the school, the school board, the alumni of the class and the current class. And we couldn't do any of this without Trish Miso. She's been great working on this project over the years, or projects over the years. She's been great to work with. So we'll be doing that this Friday night. And at the same time, we're going to be collecting kind of some footage for another grant that we're working on with the school. The T-Mobile folks made us aware of the Friday Night Lights grant. It's a T-Mobile grant that could bring as much as two million dollars for the stadium project. Details will follow on how this will happen. So we've been working with Principal Jackson, Aaron Heasley, and Patricia Miso to basically come up with a plan. They've already submitted the application. We're going to be doing some Instagram posts, very structured. And then so far into the project, we're going to ask the community to really post and do some hashtags, and we'll try to share that as much as possible. But it will be a quantitative aspect of that. So we really, as a community, really need to get involved with that, and we will be sending that, you know, our marching orders soon on that. So we just had a, Bryce had a conference call with them today, out at school. We're trying to get everything together. But this event on Friday night's going to be pretty cool, because we're going to be able to take some pictures of the current grant, the Hometown Grant, and maybe use those to, you know, work on Instagram to better our chances to get this other opportunity. And that is the T-Mobile Friday Night Lights grant. So pretty, pretty cool how it's happened, and we're really appreciative of the school working with us on that. So we'll continue to do that, and like I said, we'll send out the invites and the orders on how we're going to promote that. Okay, so in the spring of twenty-two, the City Council discussed the safety of the traffic circle. Remember Dick McBane had some difficulties getting across the road, and he had his dogs, and he almost got hit. And we, as a council, talked about it for a few council meetings, and council tasked us to find a solution. We performed a traffic study and developed, basically, there were four alternatives that the traffic study looked at, and they really thought that a single-lane roundabout would work better than what is up there now, which is a traffic circle. And it doesn't really have the safety aspects that a real roundabout has. So it's a traffic circle, but it will become an official roundabout. And I couldn't stress more that the iconic clock in the center will remain. It's not going to change. The very center of the intersection will stay. We're actually focusing on the actual pavement in the rest of the square. But, you know, no clock will be harmed in this project. But this project will start as early as July first, twenty twenty-seven, so it is a ways down the road. We did not, so when you do this, you kind of, you know, you apply for the grant through ODOT, but you don't have any official drawings or engineering drawings yet. That's all taking place now. But we were awarded one point three million dollars for a grant to do that through the Small Cities Grant Program for ODOT. We really appreciate that. And that is a ninety, it works out to be a ninety-five percent grant, which is, makes it, you know, just a wonderful thing. You know, a lot of these grants are seventy-five percent or eighty percent, but this one's nine, it works out to be ninety-five percent. And we're very excited that we were selected for the Small Cities Program. That Small Cities Program is the same program that paved East Park Avenue, Heck Road, Springfield Road a few years back, and it's the same program that just redid Fairfield School Road and is currently doing Lisbon Street. And that starts out at West Park and goes clear down under the underpass, and it's going to redo the underpass, so we can all be happy that by, I would say, it would be safe to say, by middle, let's see, in the first week of October, the paving will be done, so it'll be really nice. And I don't know if you've been down there, it's, looks like a war zone, but we did get, we did get some new sidewalks put in in that neighborhood, too. So if you've been keeping track, we've done a lot of paving in that quadrant, and actually, West Railroad Street, we hope to get that one done in the next couple of years. So let's see, there's another project that we're working with CDBG in the county on, we should be doing, hopefully doing Southwest Street next year. So we've got a lot of projects going on, but we do get some calls about the underpass, but we can finally say that we're, see the light at the end of the tunnel. So that should happen by the end of the month. And then the Duquesne sidewalk project is not far behind. We're only waiting for a pedestrian bridge to finish that project. So those projects are going well, and we do have the base coat down out at Fairfield School Road. There'll be a final coat coming up, and then we still have to do the base coat and final coat on Lisbon Street. We did open bids for the Crestview Raw Waterline Project. There was a lot of interest. We're very excited about that. I believe there were eight contractors looking at that. So as I said at the last meeting, we, the city purchased a farm south of town, about three miles, and long time, I think it was in two thousand and ten, it was this eighty-six acre farm in order to put some water wells out there. So we're going to be able to, let's see, I think we have like maybe fourteen wells right now. This will bring two more wells into the fold, but it'll be in a different aquifer than all our other wells. So that'll be, it'll be very nice. We've opened the bids, and we have the necessary legislation to move forward on that project, and that project will put an eight-inch raw water line, which is going to convey the water from Crestview Road clear into town and to the water plant, and we'll treat that. And it'll, we're really looking forward to that, especially in this drought, these drought conditions, being in another aquifer right now would be really helpful. Representative Monica Rob Blaisdell stopped in City Hall last week, and we caught up on a lot of our projects, so that was nice. And she knew about the Small Cities Grant before we did, so that was, that was pretty cool. We're working with the county. They are going to do Manufacturers' Day to be held in Columbia. So it's a local Columbia manufacturers will be contacted by the county, and they're going to honor their employees and have lunch for them sometime in the next, sometime next month, so we're working on that. Park Board concurred with a proposal to implement cemetery rate adjustments for burials. That was in your packets. We put legislation on the agenda accordingly. Tim had done a study to adjust those rates, and we appreciate him doing that. We've placed an emergency ordinance on the agenda tonight regarding the County Line Road Sewer Assessment Project that we completed a few years ago. So in the last two years, we've just really renewed a single-year note, but now that we're ready to, the project that's completely done, we know all the costs, so now we are going to put on the twenty-year note, and we're going to put those assessments on those properties. As a reminder, most of those properties wanted this sewer, and they wanted that assessment to take place, and that actually, you know, created some economic development out there off of County Line Road with the old Saybrook Assistant Living Program that's coming in, or Assistant Living Project that's coming in. It's coming along nicely. It's a seventy-nine unit facility with twenty-five units of being memory care. Let's see here. OPBA accepted our latest proposal to address wage rates. The legislation's on the agenda accordingly. We intend this legislation to be a positive step forward, not only to attracting new officers, but retaining our current ones, and we appreciate the dedication that our police force has to our city and thank them for their service in our community. And so we have that legislation on tonight, and we are also swearing in a couple of new officers tonight out here in our audience. So that's a great thing. Once a year, the Tax and Incentive Review Council meets. They look at all the enterprise CRA agreements that are within the city, and they look at the commercial and industrial projects. They just met last week, and probably by next meeting, they'll have a recommendation for all of you with, we'll be getting the meeting minutes from the county for that project or for that meeting, and then we'll ask you to concur with their findings. So look for that. It's your next meeting. We need to perform some house cleaning as it relates to Huntington Bank accounts. We placed two emergency resolutions to complete the task. Changes related to designees and will be effective in the future despite roster changes. So if, you know, if the staff changes, if the names change, the, you know, we have people come and go, we'll still have the position for the resolutions to, you know, slide those new people in, in those slots. Electric Department, actually, I should say, all the departments worked on the street fair setup and teardown. I know the electric department did a lot to get the electric going, but another great year, and we appreciate all the help from all the departments working on that. The electric department did temporary service connection, a couple and one disconnection as these projects come on and off. So they were performing that. Main Street manhole cleaning, they went down, there's, I guess there's manholes that they have electric to down South Main Street, and they cleaned those out in preparation for the street fair. Park and Cemetery, street fair setup and cleanup. They began draining and winterizing the pool facility, and they completed the new roof on the Twin Oaks Pavilion, number one. Water Department completed twenty-six locates and one work order. They fixed a broken curb box, completed second pressure and flow test for environmental design group. Scheduled sanitary surveys with Ohio EPA, and that it's tomorrow. It's an eight-hour review that the EPA will be out checking all the plant records and all the equipment, storage tanks and such. They fixed a leaky service, repaired a broken water main on North Middle. Street Department, they patched holes, water cuts, and used eight tons of patch, picked up seven loads of brush, and prepped for a street fair. Waste Water Department, they did waste sludge, and they're working, monitoring the lakefront lift station project, and they sewer-jetted some mains. We have a gas aggregation program in the city, and we've been talking about the rates over the past few years, and if you remember, the rate that we currently have is higher than the last few years. We were able to get a better rate here recently, and that new rate will kick in December first, twenty twenty-four, and go through eleven of twenty-six, and that new rate is point five seven five CCF, point five seven five CCF. And I think we're currently around point eight CCF, so it's a significant decrease. And Mayor, I think that's everything I have.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you, Lance.
Welcome.
I just have to say that I wish all of you could see what the students do in putting on a PowerPoint presentation when they develop these projects, like the one that we got the fifty thousand dollar grant to do. It's really going to be exciting to see what's going to be developing, and that'll be our third student project in the downtown, which I think's really changed the downtown significantly and positively, and probably one of the reasons we're completely full downtown. All our storefronts are full, and we're very lucky for that, and it's great to see everybody working together to keep our downtown a very great place to come and to visit and to shop. So I think it's all good.
That's a great point, Mayor, because I forgot about the collaboration part on this next project. So the last project was the Schmitz. We could not have done the parking lot without them, and prior to that, we couldn't have done the Columbia Corridor without Roland Gosney. And this project is taking place, Becky and Brad Rantz, they own that lot, and they've been actually part of the presentations from day one, and they're very excited. And if anybody was at their original Planning Commission meeting that they came to, they were thinking about doing something very similar to what the students came up with. So they're very excited about it, and it's great to have the community collaboration like that.
It's going to really be significant, and other murals are going up. There's some really exciting things in the layout of that piece of land. I think it's going to be really beneficial to the downtown, or bring entertainment, and we're going to do some food trucks. Now, I won't go into the details, but it's very exciting, and to get this grant from T-Mobile is just fantastic to bring that money in. So it's going to be fun, and it's great to work with the schools and, you know, try to work on some of their projects and develop that coordination between the two of us. Any have questions, any questions for manager? Thank you. You received a copy of the August twenty twenty-four mayor's court report. Any questions on that report? As well as you received a copy of the September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four bill list? Questions on the bill list? We have no old business tonight, so I would, and I'm moving to new business, and I would entertain a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only.
Second.
Motion second. The end, will you call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
entertain a motion to approve the request by Debbie Himes, President of the Columbian Fairfield Township Historical, decided requesting permission to reschedule the Citizens of the Cemetery Tour Chapter Three event, which was previously approved at City Council at the September third, twenty twenty-four meeting, to November first, twenty twenty-four due to a conflict with the school football event, and pending approval with the Park Board at their meeting on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Everything will remain the same for the event as previously approved.
So move. Okay.
I just want to say how much I appreciate Debbie's honesty in the letter that she sent to us. It was a impression.
Yes. Did we hit a second?
Yes, we did.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes. God bless Debbie. We have a motion second. Any questions on the motion? The end, will you call the roll?
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding agreement dated September ninth, twenty twenty-four between the OPBA sergeants and OPBA officers and the city in regards to equity adjustments slash wage scale increases and detective pay increases.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on the motion? The end, will you call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
entertain a motion to concur with City Manager Lance Willard and Chief of Police William Myers to hire Brandon Smith as a provisional full-time police officer and to hire Benjamin Esposito as a part-time officer for the City of Columbia Police Department.
I move.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments on the motion? The end, will you call the roll?
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Gentlemen, would you come forward to be sworn in to your positions?
I, Benjamin, I, Brandon Smith, solemnly swear, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Columbia, Ohio, and the Charter, the ordinances of the City of Columbia, Ohio, and that I will faithfully discharge my duties, and that I will faithfully discharge my duties as provisional full-time officer, as provisional full-time officer, which I've been appointed, to which I've been appointed. Congratulations.
State your name. Hi, Brandon Smith. I solemnly swear, I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Columbia, Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Columbia, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
Part-time police officer.
As a part-time police officer.
To which I've been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Everything will be easier after you went through that. And memorizing all of that, you did good, we look forward to having you on board, and we really appreciate it. You'll be a good addition to our news, our staff, thank you.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to accept the fiscal officer certificate, sanitary sewer county line road improvement bonds.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Any questions, comments on the motion? Do you have me call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Entertain a motion to read the following ordinances, ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Dan?
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty four dash O dash three two five seven, emergency. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of sixty six hundred forty one thousand dollars. For the purpose of paving, in anticipation of the collection of special assessments. Herefore levy the property owner's portions cost of constructing sanitary sewers. Together with manholes and service connections, therefore, together with all necessary apparatuses thereto. And by installing and replacing paving as necessary to extend sanitary sewer service. Along County Line Road between certain termini and declaring an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Only one word I don't know how to pronounce. Do you have me call the roll?
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to read the following ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Dan?
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty four dash O dash three two five eight, emergency. An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Sweet Meadows Farm Drainage LLC from Beloit, Ohio. For the furnishing of all labor, materials, and equipment necessary for the Crestview and Fairfield School Road Raw Waterline Project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Question on the motion? Do you have me call the roll?
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to read the following ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Do you have me call the roll?
Banner?
Abstain.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty four G R dash six five seven, emergency. An emergency resolution designating Huntington Bank as a public depository for the City of Columbiana.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Do you have me call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Abstain.
Can I ask a clarifying question here, because I know. It requires five votes to pass this as an emergency, so the abstention, does that count as, count with the majority?
The abstention goes with the majority, is my understanding, Mr. Hudson, am I correct?
That is correct.
That's one clarification. Thank you.
Entertain a motion to read the following ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Do you have me call the roll?
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Abstain.
Souter?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty four dash R dash six five eight, emergency. An emergency resolution designating Huntington, designating Huntington Bank as a public depository. For the mayor's court of the City of Columbiana.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Do you have me call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Abstain.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty four dash O dash three two five nine, first reading, an ordinance vacating a portion of an unnamed alley.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Do you have me call the roll?
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty four dash O dash three two six zero, first reading. An ordinance establishing rights for the Columbiana Cemetery and repealing any ordinances, resolutions. Or parts thereof to the extent of an, of an, any conflict herewith.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any questions on the motion? Do you have me call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty four dash O dash three two six one, first reading. An ordinance amending the City of Columbiana code provisions set forth in chapter six one eight at section. Six one eight point oh one of the codified ordinance of the City of Columbiana, Ohio.
So moved. Second.
Well, I do wanna comment on this one. I actually brought this to Mark some time ago. A friend of mine, Debbie, is renovating a house here in town, and someone had told her. That specifically pit bulls were mentioned in our ordinances as a vicious dog. And some of the rules around owning a vicious dog in town are, the way you have to stay and stuff like that are. You know, not great, so she asked me to just look into it and see if we could, if we could change that, so. I discussed with Mark, we took a look at the vicious dog ordinance, and I'll go ahead and read what it actually says. There's, there's some other definitions, but the last definition of vicious dog specifically says belongs to a breed that is commonly known as a pit bull dog. The ownership keeping or harboring, harboring of such a breed of dog shall be prima facie evidence of the ownership keeping or harboring of a vicious dog. The only breed that's called out specifically in ordinances is a pit bull. Not, you know, any of the other fifteen different breeds that you can come up with that might be sometimes considered vicious. So Mark and I discussed it, we agreed that it probably wouldn't harm our ordinance in any way, shape, or form to take it out. And and I proposed, I bring it to you tonight to to go ahead and and take care of that. My friend did have one comment she wanted me to read. At some point, we would like to open our home to a dog from a shelter, and since a large portion of the dogs in shelters are pets or mixed pets. We want to make sure that dogs are adoptable for families who want to provide a home for them. And just, I looked at the Angels for Animals website the other day, and roughly two thirds of the thirty or so dogs on there. Were described in some way, shape, or form as a pit bull. So it's, it is, it is a significant thing, and I just present to you the question, can we just remove that one? One clause and and just make vicious dogs vicious dogs without that specific designation. That's it, we're trying to keep it brief.
Any other questions on the motion? Good work.
Thank you.
Good work.
Mark did most of the work, I just asked the question.
Good question. Okay. Do you have me call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
In a moment, I am going to. Ask for a motion to go into executive session, and we will not have any business. The council will not conduct any business after the executive session, so as our policy is, we move up. Two agenda items prior to the. The the final executive session motion, so just to allow public comments, so at this point. In in our meeting, I'm going to ask if anyone out there. Would like to make a comment to us. Come forward.
Okay. Some of you know, I just gave them a call up. Brendan Batingle, and I've been involved in a lot of projects. Here in Columbiana, as a trustee of R and B. We spent over four hundred thousand dollars in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, creating the circle and the square. I understand you're going to preserve the clock. How much of it is going to be preserved, how much of the planter? That's my first question, and the reason I ask that is I feel that that planter construction. Made of modular concrete building blocks was done so because it is repairable. If you remove that, the clock is going to be imperiled. That's a barrier, we know that from past history. That's my, my question, my second is a comment to Lance. In going down South Main Street last night, I noticed numerous streetlights were out.
Thanks, Skip. Appreciate your comment.
The answer.
So we have not designed it yet, but I don't foresee any changes of the center. Of that whole entire flower bed or clock area, that's, that's, that's our vision.
Can we request that?
Sure.
I don't believe the corners will be changed either, it's just, no, I think it's just gonna be in inside the curbs. Yeah.
I think, I think we would probably, in the same vein, request if, if something does have to be disturbed, that we would preserve and move those bricks to a. Location in the, that certainly makes sense to to ask, to make sure that those bricks are preserved. So, yeah. Appreciate that, thank you.
That was a great project, the R and B committee, you know, really set the tone and the. For all the other pro, three projects that R and B has done in our community, and that is the iconic square now, the clock. It's very well known, so I, that's a good comment. We, that's correct, and we appreciate you raising that issue. Any other public comments? Anybody wanna share anything else out there? Okay, are there any council comments?
No, one short one, it's always nice to see the old Model A city truck in the parade.
Very good, yes. And we do take for granted the whole parade here in Columbiana, it's part of our tradition, and it's, it's a tremendous thing. Any other comments?
I do have one, I'll try to keep it brief, the sidewalk sales that just wrapped up and we're getting ready to start the new group. I noticed driving through Main Street when they were going on that the sidewalks were pretty crowded. There were a couple places where it was nearly impassable, and being that we're not closing the street for those sidewalk sales. I think it's really important to make sure that the sidewalks are passable when they're going on. And then the other thing I noticed was that Mulberry Alley was blocked, there was actually a truck sitting in there. And the, the display coming from that truck was actually one of the things that was blocking the sidewalk. And I know we didn't authorize closing any streets for that sidewalk sale. And specifically, I mean, I look back at the documentation, it was noted in there, you know, I think. The chief noted that there are no streets being closed, I think the, the application said no streets will be closed.
Okay.
So we want to make sure that Mulberry Alley is not, or any of the alleys or anything downtown are not being blocked. That was it.
Good.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I have one. Last meeting, Lance reviewed. The, our signage requirements particularly focused on. You know, the political elections that are gonna be coming forward here in the next couple months here, and. And we are already starting to see more signs. I'd just like to make the comment and a reminder to all of our citizens that. One of the great things about the United States of America is we have the freedom of speech. It's, it's documented, it's part of our. Constitution, and it's part of what America's all about. And I hope we can respect, a lot of times, like, I wanna have my freedom of speech, but in your freedom of speech, you can't have it. And that can't happen and should not happen, and so I hope we can respect each other's right to express how we feel. And what we're thinking and what we support, so that's just my comment that I'd like to make tonight. Any other comments? At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session, discussion of purchase of property. Section one point one point twenty two G two for public purposes. If premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive. Or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest.
So moved.
Motion? Motion second. Do you have me call the roll?
Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
And then entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Motion in a second. Do you have me call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Have a motion to adjourn? Can you adjourn?